Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Teeter.
Here.
Councilmember Madera.
Present.
Councilmember Frank.
Present.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman. Councilmember Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Guardiola.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, everybody's here except for Mr. Hughesman. I'm open for a motion to give him an excused absence. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Hughesman tonight's meeting.
Councilman Guardiola.
Second.
A motion and a second to give that excused absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Tonight, we're going to stand here in a moment for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I'd like to have you keep in your prayers the Amador family. Our former councilman Andrew Amador and his wife lost their son about two weeks ago. Pretty young, in his twenties. And so I know their family's going through a lot of grief right now. But if you'll please stand and join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. First item on the agenda is the audience introduction. If you'll pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Okay. Renee Bullock.
Guillermo Serna.
Rhysa Garcia.
Ryan Seestrom, Colorado Oil and Gas Association.
Chris Kramer, Community Development Director.
Anthony Stolato.
Michelle Claymore, Economic Development Director.
Julie Murphy, Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission.
Greg Duronlow, COGCC.
Melissa Howsey, COGCC.
Carly Siller, Commerce City.
Susan Commerce City.
Bill Hyde, Adams 14 Board of Education.
Cheryl Kirstens, Finance.
Sarah Kurtz, Aid Bailey.
Armando Ardeola, Finance.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Gail Bates, Commerce City.
All right, thank you all for being here today.
I'm glad we didn't leave Carolyn out of the mix over there, so thank you. We're going to get into citizen communication. Per the council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before council, so please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. We do have three people signed up on the list tonight. Gail? Come on up.
Thank you. I'm here in response to the Irondale Resolution that's going to be in its second approval tonight, and I was just having some questions about what the deadline was, how it was going to work, what's going to come first, how long is it going to take, so on and so forth. Are those questions that only God knows?
No. It's not something that we know yet either, but I could tell you what the best thing for me to do is, request that a council member pull that from the consent agenda for second reading tonight so that we can have some discussion, and I'll have you come back up during that time.
Okay, and I'd also like to thank the street crew for coming out and fixing the potholes out there. Still a little war-sporty, but okay. And the people that cut down the weeds in the trees. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Good evening, Council. Renee Bullock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street, Commerce City, Colorado. I'm speaking on behalf of a couple of businesses up north that have employees that take the bus from down here to get up there. And it takes employees an hour and a half of a bus ride from the southern part of Commerce City to get up to the northern part of Commerce City just to go to their job. And we were, and I know this isn't in your purview, but I was wondering if anybody would like to go with me from the council to RTD and address the same matter. I would be willing to go with you down there and see if we can get a circulator or something that runs from north to south that makes it more convenient for our residents to travel both back and forth up there, the ones that don't have cars. My second issue is, I was at the recreation center up north, and a gentleman said that he heard that there were going to be a fee increase. And he asked me, which I don't know why they ask me, but I get all these questions up there, and Steve isn't there when I need him. So he asked me, is the fee increase going to be across the board, non-resident or resident? And that's my only question to you, if that's available for an answer tonight.
I'll try to answer both of them for you. First of all, you, after being, serving on this council for many years, realize that the bus scheduling is out of our hands. Secondly, RTD doesn't have any money to even finish the rail lines that they started. And we were at risk of losing the circulator on 60th Avenue because of lack of ridership. So ridership has been a huge issue. I think if one of the council members wants to go with you to RTD to push them for a local circulator, I think that would be great. I just don't want you to have high hopes that that would happen because RTD isn't doing anything right now.
They're raising rates.
Well, there you go.
They're raising rates and they're cutting routes.
And other cities are actually looking at putting in their own local circulators. And that's probably a more viable option than RTD providing us with a circulator. I think Brighton's one of them that's looking at a circulator right now within the city.
Would it be feasible in any future, near or far, for us to have a circulator that would possibly go from south to north and north to south?
Well, you have the answer to that, and the answer is, yeah, it just is all about money. And the young lady behind you wants Irondale done, so I don't know what to tell you.
Okay.
All right? But it absolutely is something that we've talked about in the past. We can continue to talk about. Your second item, remind me what it was?
The rec center fees.
Rec center fees. We've had, and I think you were here when we had some preliminary discussions. I can't speak for the council because the council hasn't made a decision yet, but I'm assuming that we're looking at more non-resident fee increases than we are resident fee increases. There'll probably be some minor resident fee increases, but until that happens and the council makes a decision, we won't know for sure. But you were here when we talked about it. We held off those increases for a year to make sure that the new rec center got opened up and got to functioning so that everything was fair across the board. Carolyn, do you have anything you want to add on the rec center fees and what to expect to be coming to council?
While Carolyn's coming up, city council did last year approve fee increases for 2018 that aren't taking effect until August, so you delayed 2018 increases until August. We're trying to find the specific fees.
What Carolyn remembers off the top of her head. Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, I wish I could tell you I remember off the top of my head, but here's what I can tell you. The information will be going out with this fall brochure. The fee increases that were approved and finalized during the budget process last year and approved by council will go into effect in August. I don't have the exact date. There were some increases to non-resident. Council did not want any increases to senior and youth. So there was, I believe, a minor increase with the adult, which then affected the family pass.
Right. So we've kept it very, very low, continue along the lines of what we have done. Mr. Bullock? Thank you. All right, thanks Carolyn. All right, Mr. Seestrom.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, staff. Thank you for allowing me to address you again this evening. My name is Ryan Seestrom. I'm with the Colorado Oil and Gas Association, 1800 Glenarm Place, Denver, Colorado. First, I would like to start by thanking the city for taking the time to learn more about our industry and creating a stakeholder process. By learning more about our industry, how we are regulated, safe, and beneficial to Colorado, I'm positive that Commerce City will see how the responsible development of oil and natural gas will be a boon to the area and its residents. As you've heard previously from industry employees, many live in the communities they work in and care about the health and safety of their friends and family just as much as anybody else. Safety is a priority for our industry, and in fact, Colorado has had and continues to have a regulatory framework that surpasses every other state in this country. As the regulatory body of the oil and natural gas industry in Colorado, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission continuously ensures the responsible development of our industry by balancing the need for development, but also protecting public health, safety, welfare, and the environment. Thank you to the COGCC for speaking this evening and for the work that their agency does. As the city continues to learn more about our industry, please consider COGA and myself as a resource. I look forward to continuing to work with the city and helping in any way that I possibly can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, now, through the list, I know I see a hand flickering back there. Is there anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up on the list that wants to speak during citizen communication? Now's the time to let me know that. Mr. Serna?
I have a dilemma. Our HOA decided to put no parking, I'm from Foxton, to put no parking right around the separation from the power lines to 102nd Place, all along up to Sable from where I live. And it used to be okay because people would be able to park right along the park, okay? But we wake up one morning and no parking zone from a certain time to a certain time. So in the evening, all of a sudden, I got two cars parked in front of my house, and sometimes I can't put out my trash cans. And we have families that have been there. One of them's got eight cars, the other one's got six, and so on and so on. So what I need is a copy of the ordinance or the city to notify that whole area there, you know, on what are the rules and regulations? Who's going to take care of what? Because it's going to create problems. You tell people, you know, hey, please, ta ta ta. Kids don't listen. Parents might, but again, kids don't listen. And something's going to happen if we don't watch out. So I need clarification as to who's going to take charge in the parking in front of your house, okay? And what are the rules and what are the regulations?
Well, it sounds like you are talking about my cul-de-sac.
Right.
There's that many cars.
Yes.
We do have an ordinance that says the property lines of your property, that street frontage is for your parking. Public can park there, but not for more than four hours. If there's a car parked there for more than four hours, you have to report it to the police department. It is not a priority call when that goes to the police department because they're dealing with a lot of other issues. Officer would come out, chalk the wheel, and if the car doesn't move within another four hours, then I believe is when they would be ticketed and/or towed. Is that correct, Chief? That's correct. Okay. So that covers that situation. Secondly, I have a concern if HOAs are putting up no parking signs on city right-of-way. I can't imagine that the HOAs would be installing no parking signs without the city authorization. And did the city put up no parking signs? Because that's our right-of-way, and we control that right-of-way, and we would control that parking.
I don't believe the city installed any no parking signs, but I would have to check. If we did not and the HOA did, we'll let them know that those signs are not enforceable.
Correct. So we'll look into that, Guillermo, but if the city put them up, or the, you know, because that's our right-of-way, we would control that parking, then you would be a ticketable offense if you parked there. But, you know, Joe Resident can't just go out and put a no parking sign up in front of his house and think that it's enforceable. The city controls that right-of-way and that public parking, and that parking is still public. However, if you're there for more than four hours, the owner of the property can call and complain about a vehicle being parked in front of their house for too many hours.
And that's in the identification between?
Your property lines.
Okay, right in front of the house.
Yep, so.
Where they're poked down.
Yep. The section of road in front of your house is for your parking. It's also public for up to four hours. After four hours, you can call and file a complaint.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, I see one more, two more. All right, I'll take the young lady first.
Hi, I'm Susan Noble, 10642 O'Leath Street. Because of COGCC's presentation tonight, we're here representing North Range Concerned Citizens and the scores of Commerce City residents who are concerned about health and safety issues for the residents and the environment when it comes to the more than 150 wells that are planned for the Commerce City area. The North Range will be pinned in on three sides, on 120th, on Tower, and Highway 2. We hope that you ask important questions of Director Murphy that will allay concerns or, at the very least, figure out a way to adhere to the Martinez case ruling. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more. Come on up. Dr. Hyde?
Mr. Chairman, Councilmen, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I'm Bill Hyde at 9450 Monaco Street in Henderson, and I just wanted to thank you. I think everyone knows that Adams 14 Board of Education and the district is going through some difficult, dealing with some difficult issues right now. And a number of you have shown your concern and have supported the efforts that we're struggling with and so forth, and particularly Mr. Douglas and Mr. Guardiola, who attend the board meetings on a regular basis. But I know also a number of the rest of you have also concerned about what we're struggling with. And I just want to say thank you because it feels, your concern is appreciated. And these are serious issues we're dealing with, and it's nice to know that there are a number of you that are concerned and pulling for the board. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to make sure everybody knows that this entire council has serious concerns with what's happening at District 14 and trying to make sure that we, it's hard for this council to build the kind of community that we want to build if we don't have quality education. And so we feel for you and the board members that serve, and we want to do our part to help make things better. And I'm very intrigued and hopeful that the new appointed board member is going to be a lot of help for the board. So we're there to help, but we want to make sure we're helping in the right way. So thank you for coming forward tonight, Director. All right, anyone else? All right, we're through citizen communication. Move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are six items listed under the consent agenda, and I am going to pull the one item off the consent agenda, which is the second reading for the Irondale Area Plan. So there will be a remaining five items on the agenda. Is there anyone on council that wishes to remove another item off of the consent agenda other than the Irondale Plan? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Teeter?
Trying to figure out which one this exactly is. Okay, I make a motion to remove the consent agenda concerning the Irondale Area.
No, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the five items other than the Irondale Plan.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Guardiola?
I have a motion and a second.
Oh.
To approve the consent agenda. For the city attorney, please read the titles of the consent agenda.
Resolution 2018-55, Resolution Amending the Directory of City Fees and Charges. Ordinance 2169, An Ordinance Amending the 2018 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant Funds in the amount of $115,000 for the Sand Creek Open Space Remediation Phase 1 Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2170, An Ordinance Amending the 2018 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant Funds in the amount of $250,804 for the Eagle Point Recreation Center Aquatic Enhancements Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2171, An Ordinance Amending the 2018 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the State of Colorado Department of Natural Resources Funding Agreement in the amount of $228,523 for the Sand Creek Open Space Remediation and Restoration Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2173, An Ordinance Amending the 2018 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by transferring $375,000 from the General Fund to the CIPP Fund for costs associated with the acquisition and demolition of the Forest Drive property located at 6017 Forest Drive in Commerce City and authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'm open for a roll call vote. For the record, consent agenda is approved unanimously, one excused absence. All right, now we'll take up the item of SAP 005-18, which is the Irondale item that we pulled, if I can find it here. Irondale Neighborhood and Infrastructure Plan. I know we had the young lady get up and talk to us about what our plans were as of right now. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McBroom. We will identify the costs of infrastructure for that neighborhood. We'll have to identify funding sources, and we will be doing our budget retreat later in August. So those items will come up. It just depends on what we can afford to fund, at what time, as to when things get done and how much gets done each year. I can't tell you whether Rosemary would get done in the next five years or if widening Rosemary happens in two. It's up to the council based on revenues and what we have to spend. Is that correct, Mr. McBroom?
Yes, sir. That's a very good answer. Folks might recall that the key improvements are rather expensive drainage improvements, and so every year that'll be subject to the budgeting process. I did mention to Mrs. Bates that the city council budget retreat is coming up later in August, August 27th, but that our list of needs in this community far exceeds our ability to fund them. So improvements in the Irondale neighborhood will essentially compete with other needed improvements around the city, and ultimately, it's city council's decision what to fund in any given year.
Last I recall, we had about a billion dollars worth of CIPP projects that were identified. Is that correct?
And we've spent about 300 million over the last few years, and the list of needs is still a billion.
Still a billion. So that would be CIPP issues that we'll have to take up, and we'll have to determine, do we need new street lights for an intersection? Do we want to pave some of the roads in Irondale? But we would like to see some of those improvements happening. But I just, without having a huge pocketful of cash to be able to take care of all of them at one time, some of those are very costly. But, you know, just pay attention and watch when we do our budget retreat. That'll be on Channel 8 as well, or you can come down and listen to it.
with the acquisition and demolition of the Forest Drive property located at 6017 Forest Drive in Commerce City and authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'm open for a roll call vote. For the record, consent agenda is approved unanimously. One excused absence. All right, now we'll take up the item of SAP 005-18, which is the Irondale item that we pulled, if I can find it here. Irondale Neighborhood and Infrastructure Plan. I know we had the young lady get up and talk to us about what our plans were as of right now, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McBroom. We will identify the costs of infrastructure for that neighborhood. We'll have to identify funding sources, and we will be doing our budget retreat later in August. So, those items will come up. It just depends on what we can afford to fund, at what time as to when things get done and how much gets done each year. I can't tell you whether Rosemary would get done in the next five years or if widening Rosemary happens in two. It's up to the council based on revenues and what we have to spend. Is that correct, Mr. McBroom?
Yes, sir. That's a very good answer. Folks might recall that the key improvements are rather expensive drainage improvements, and so every year that'll be subject to the budgeting process. I did mention to Mrs. Bates that the city council budget retreat is coming up later in August, August 27th, but that our list of needs in this community far exceeds our ability to fund them. So, improvements in the Irondale neighborhood will essentially compete with other needed improvements around the city, and ultimately, it's city council's decision what to fund in any given year.
Last I recall, we had about a billion dollars worth of CIPP projects that were identified. Is that correct?
And we've spent about $300 million over the last few years, and the list of needs is still a billion.
Still a billion. So, that would be CIPP issues that we'll have to take up, and we'll have to determine, do we need new street lights for an intersection? Do we want to pave some of the roads in Irondale? But we would like to see some of those improvements happening, but I just, without having a huge pocketful of cash to be able to take care of all of them at one time, some of those are very costly. But, you know, just pay attention and watch when we do our budget retreat. That'll be on Channel Eight as well, or you can come down and listen to it here at City Hall, and we'll talk about funding and what we're funding, and we also have the Citizen Improvement Advisory Council. Is that correct? That's the organization that also vets our CIPP needs. So, no, there is not any money identified yet. We just got the plan done. We're trying to identify what those costs will be, and those costs get greater over time. So, the sooner we can do those improvements, the cheaper they are. But hopefully, that's helpful to the questions that you brought forward for Citizen Communication. Great. Anyone else have anything on Irondale before I ask for a motion? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion on second reading to approve the plan. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve SAP-005-18, ordinance adopting the Irondale Neighborhood and Infrastructure Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Attorney?
Ordinance SAP 00518, an ordinance adopting the Irondale Neighborhood and Infrastructure Plan.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, is approved on second reading through, not through consent, but individually, one excused absence. All righty, now we'll get into presentations. I'd like to invite a good friend of mine, Maria Gonzalez, the president of Adelante Community Development, forward to make a presentation. And good evening.
Good evening. Maria Gonzalez, 7296 Magnolia Street.
Welcome.
And thank you. So good to see all of you. I would like to share with you all of the great things that we are doing in Commerce City and out of Commerce City as well. Thank you for the opportunity. Today with me, I have a couple of our board members, Yvonne and Salvador. They're joining us for this great presentation, so please feel free to ask some questions about the progress that we're doing. As many of you know, Adelante Community Development is an organization that started here in Commerce City. Jerry, our past city manager, and Mizraam Cordero, and I started an adventure asking business owners what they want. And that question could be very dangerous sometimes. Be careful what you ask because you might get it. So, we had so many business owners that came forward at an event at the golf course, and there was a lot of good questions about how to build businesses, how to build sustainable businesses, and this started in October 2011. As you know, positions change, people move over, and finally, we decided that, at that time, Minority Business Association couldn't really survive in that environment of that business community. So, I decided with some of the Spanish-speaking business owners to take over and get a group of businesses that would really take over as a new name and catering to the Spanish-speaking business community in Commerce City. We decided as a new committee to name our organizations Adelante, which means moving forward, Adelante Community Development, because that's what we want to do. We want to move businesses forward, making sure that they have the resources needed for success. And we've been working since 2014 as a nonprofit organization located here in Commerce City. And we have eight board members, and we're waiting for the city to appoint someone in the future. We used to have somebody from Economic Development. Hopefully, we can, you know, get someone soon so that you can get a little more updated frequently on what's going on. So, our values are really empowerment, education, and trust. We want to enrich families. The way that we do it is we're outreach into the Spanish-speaking families because there's really no outreach in Commerce City and Adams County to the Hispanic families that are in need of information and resources. So, those are the two areas that we're working with, financial literacy, economic development, and also community outreach. So, I'll tell you a little bit about some of the programs that we are doing. In regards to economic development, for four years already, we have been doing business one-on-one coaching where individuals that want to start their business come into our office. We go through the whole process of doing the registration at the state secretary of state, and we also do the federal employee number through the IRS office. And we look for a mentorship opportunity from another business in the same area or send them through the SBDC Office, the Small Business Development Center. And we recently began a partnership with the Office of Economic Development at the state level so that our businesses have someone to look up to and get some of those resources that they are needing. We also do a Conganas event, that's every two months, and what we do, we focus on like a business summit with the major business needs that are going on. This one, we've been going in Denver. Our next one is going to be in Aurora, and we're expanding outside of Commerce City as well because the need is really great. We also do monthly workshops here in Commerce City at the Derby Resource Center or Small Business Development Center, and those are the second Tuesday of every month, and we talk about different business resources. You know, your accounting, your finance, your bookkeeping, your access to capital, your day-to-day operations, your marketing, everything that relates to how is your business done correctly and making sure that we have the resources and referrals that are meeting their needs as they continue to grow. We created a program that is going to be educating new business owners and existing business owners that have a food truck. We have invested about $30,000 in this program since we have no technical school, and there's so many food trucks that are running, and they get denied permits, inspections, they get fined. So, we decided to invest in a curriculum that is going to teach these business owners everything that they need to know, from business inspections, from where to find the money to obtain their vehicle that they need based on the kind of food that they're going to be selling, and providing them with resources specifically in those areas. That's one of the one curriculums that we're starting. The second one will be coming up next year for janitorial companies. We want to make sure that these business owners are not getting taken advantage of, but they have the opportunity to be successful and competitive with the right knowledge. So, we're pretty excited about those new projects and working with some of the cities. You know, I met with Brian about some of these great things that we're doing, and if there's a possibility that you can reimburse the class fee once the businesses get registered here in Commerce City, that would be a great opportunity to continue to increase our business leadership within Commerce City. I'll tell you more about it as soon as we start the first date, which is going to be in September, the first cohort of students. I'm pretty excited about that. Just to give you feedback, on 2014, we registered just a few businesses. The green is construction, the yellow is transportation, and the red is other businesses. Compared to 2014 to 2017, 100 and, almost 150 businesses we registered in 2017. The growth continues. These are not only Commerce City businesses, these are throughout the metro area, and they come to us because we build the trust. They know that we are not going to charge them all of these services for free, and we're going to guide them into the resources that are better aligned to what they need. And we're not going to take advantage of them because we've been there before. We want to make sure that people are trusting, and we want to bring them to the government agencies so that they build that trust and work together into those business needs, you know, the license, the permit. We've had some issues in the past with signage in particular areas where they're not approved or zoned differently that normal business owners do not know or acknowledge about specific areas like Derby. In 2014, we did 94, attended four workshops. In 2017, we had 295 people that have come through the workshops. So, those continue to grow, and like I said, we're expanding outside of the area. So, that's some pretty good stuff going on. Some of those workshops that we do, like I said, we talk about, you know, what are the audits, what, how do you do your marketing, safety, what are your insurance needs, human resources, construction? Right now, with the growth in I-70, we're going to need so much information. People are going to be taken advantage. People are not going to know where to file different permits and situations. And then, we're going to have so many thousands of workers every single day in that intersection. So, bringing that food truck program is really going to give them access to some, to more choices of food since we're going to have, you know, all these workers and all these hours. So, learning opportunities are definitely a great asset. That was an event at the Rapid Stadium in April, and it was about financial leadership. You know, how do you, as a business owner, learn and as a family? How do you learn about your financials? You know, what's there available for you? How do you apply for line of credit? Many of us have heard of Notarios. They offer so many different services acting as attorneys, and so we help these business owners and families understand, how do you choose the best that is for you without being, again, taken advantage? You know, we talk about credit card, we talk about debt, we talk about identity theft, auto loans. We've helped people that have, and they pay here dealerships, you know, 20%, 25% interest, and when we build these partnerships with credit unions and move them to a 6%, it's just their face and their savings. It's just such a huge opportunity for them to invest back in their families. So, we offer a lot of these trainings, and the program that we do this is inside the Mexican consulate. So, you picture the DMV, and you already have, you know, 30, 40 people waiting for their driver's license. Same scenario at the Mexican consulate. We have 250 appointments daily, and out of those appointments, people come with their family members, and they sit down waiting for their passport or different documents that they need. So, we have a team of 17 financial institutions that we coordinate and talk about financial knowledge while people are waiting. And so, the last year, in 2017, we reached out to about 19,000 individuals. We went out to Edwards, we went out to Fort Collins, Pueblo, Colorado Springs, and these are individuals that need help all over the place. This year so far, from January through June, it's 18,000 individuals that we've touched together with all of the partnerships that we've built. So, we continue to provide information, and we continue to grow, and there's tremendous opportunity. You guys, Commerce City City Manager, Economic Development, have been a great asset to what we do. You're letting us use the facility, you know, reaching out when there's special events where we could be there and promote our organization, and just guiding us through the process of what's out there. Since we are a new organization, I really haven't asked for money to other corporates, but I want you to keep in mind that the work that we're doing continues to grow, and financial resources are extremely necessary. So, I would like for the opportunity for you to share this information with potential partners that you can see that would be able to help our community. You know, although we, our main focus is Spanish-speaking adults and business owners, we have many that are English-speaking only as well that are lost in the system of opening a business, that are lost in the system of paying taxes and identifying resources for their business. So, we're not closing doors to no one. We want to make sure that everybody that walks into Adelante are being taken care of with pride and with the proper way that people need to be addressed. So, it's important. So, we also do community outreach, and I'm so excited about this because I brought you some goodies. We have, we've taken over the community garden behind my office. It is now called Tres Girasoles, and we've been doing, Guillermo is really our gardener. Thank you, Guillermo. He is there, you know, four or five hours, maybe more, every single day watering the plants, doing whatever necessary to get these food. Today, he cut over 150 pounds of vegetables. So, and I brought you some so that you can take home. So, it's a fantastic opportunity to give back to the community. In January, we also did an event at our Lady Mother of the Church. We gave away 1,400 toys. We had anticipated that it was only going to be about 400 people. It turned out into a 1,400 event by the last week when registration was closed. So, we had a ton of activities, and people were happy. I feel that, you know, we're building that connection with our Lady Mother of the Church, and there's a lot of opportunity to outreach. We also have a legal annual resource fair that we're planning for October, and then we have, we'll start our toy drive as well in October. We have several different events that we're planning. One here at the Colorado Rapids. In 2019, we want to do a Commerce City Festival and soccer tournament. So, you'll be hearing a lot more information. I've already sent the required documents at the stadium so that they can set the date for us. They might have a game on Saturday, but we were planning to do this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so I'll definitely keep you updated, and hopefully, we can be much better partners in this huge event that we're planning. So, that's some of the pictures of the different events that we've done, and we're looking for board members that are ready to work and that are willing to help us financially as well. So, these are different corporate partnerships that you can share with people that you might know of people that want to support our mission, and that's pretty much all of the information that I have. Any questions?
Anyone on council have any questions for Maria?
I have a comment. I remember back when we were doing the first Hispanic outreaches together with Ernesto de Villa.
About 20 years ago.
Over at the Catholic Church, and I found a picture from that first event.
Oh.
And I gave it to Councilman Guardiola.
Wow.
And it's me and you and a handful of residents. Yeah, it was, it was pretty interesting. And then, you know, watching Commerce, what was Adelante before it was Adelante?
Minority Business Association.
No, no, no. What we were on. You were the president.
Oh, the outreach, yeah.
What's the name of it?
Latino Outreach?
No.
Community Enterprise.
Community Enterprise.
Community Enterprise, oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Community Enterprise. It's all, we've watched it all transition, and Guillermo's been there from day one.
Absolutely.
So, thanks Guillermo with all your gardening expertise. We'll fix that parking so when you come home from watering all the plants, you've got somewhere to park.
Thank you.
But we really appreciate everything, Maria, that you're doing. It's very beneficial to make sure that the businesses know what to do and how to do it, what they can and can't do. It makes life easier for the folks here at City Hall that have to manage the taxes and the planning and zoning and everything else. So, we appreciate what you're doing. Mr. McBroom, you have something to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let city council know that the city's been a proud investor in Adelante Community Development since Maria changed the organization back in 2014. We've been consistent investors, and I say investor because I believe we're getting a return on that investment. The services that they are providing to Commerce City businesses is not only needed for the health and vitality of those businesses, but it's just good business for us. It's good economic development work for the city. I believe we contributed $5,000 the first year of Adelante and then $3,000 every year since, and I think it's been a very sound investment for the City of Commerce City.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you. I'm going to leave this basket over there, and feel free to take anything, and come to the garden. It's open every day, Monday through Friday, from 9 to 6, and just, you know, it's such a beautiful place and tranquility, and you can take some goodies, too.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to have a presentation on the CAFR. If I can get the finance department to come forward and announce the speaker and give us the information on the CAFR, which is Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. Thank you for having us tonight to address some of the findings from the 2017 audit and financial statements. We are required to have an outside audit firm look at the records of the city. In 2016, we went through a competitive process. IBAE Lee received the award for that RFP, and they were on site. The 2017 audit started in the fall of 2017 and wrapped up within the last couple of months. Armando Guardiola on my staff is responsible for management and oversight of the audit and preparation of the financial statements. So, I certainly want to acknowledge him and thank the staff for all of the time that they have dedicated to wrapping up the audit and the financial statements. I also want to thank Sarah Kurtz and her team. We have a very good working relationship with them, so while I always say sometimes we have spirited discussions, we certainly work well together, and we appreciate the time that they dedicate to get this done. So, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Kurtz, the partner from IBAE Lee.
All right. Thank you, Sarah.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for having us. As Cheryl mentioned, I'm here today to discuss the results of the city's 2017 audit, which was, which includes the audit of the CAFER, which is the bound thick document that you have in front of you. This takes a significant amount of time to prepare. And Cheryl, Armando, and their team prepare everything except for three pages within this document. Our responsibility as auditors is to come in and audit the information in here. So we just want to thank them for their efforts in doing that as well. So I'm going to go over, just to give you a brief overview of what I'm going to go over. I'm going to go over the results of the financial statement audit. This year, the city was required to have a federal single audit, which is an audit of your federal expenditures. And that happens in years in which the city expends more than $750,000 in federal awards. So that's going to be a separate bound report that you have that says federal award reports. And then the final document that I'm going to go over is just our concluding wrap-up documentation. So first, I'm going to start with your CAFER document. So if you want to go to page one of the document, which is right behind, if you're looking at a paper bound copy, it's behind the financial section tab. This is our opinion. This is the doc, this is the three pages that I was referring to. That is our information. And the first page starts off, and it talks about the report on the financial statements. So we tell you here that we've audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, your business-type activities, each of your major funds, the discreetly presented component units, and then all of the aggregate remaining fund information. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards. Our responsibility as auditors is to come in, follow auditing standards, plan our audit to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are materially correct. The last paragraph on page one is our opinion, so this is what you're most concerned about. This is a clean, unmodified opinion where we indicate that your financial statements are fairly presented. This is the best opinion you can get because of the auditing standards that we follow. Anyone else coming in and looking at the same sets of books and records would come to the same conclusion. Page two talks about other information that's included in your CAFER. The first is required supplementary information. So this would be your management's discussion and analysis, and your budgetary schedules for your general fund and major special revenue funds, as well as some of your other post-employment benefit schedules. There's also combining information included following the notes to the financial statements. So we just point your attention to that as well. The last paragraph that's on page two, and it goes over into page three, it says that we conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards and have issued a separate report on that. Since that report ties into the single audit reporting package, that separate bound document, I'm going to talk about that following the CAFER Financial Statement Number Presentation. The chart that I have up here, you can find it in the CAFER on page seven. I'm sorry, just want to get my pages together. I like to point, and this is included, this chart is within, on page seven, it's in the management's discussion and analysis. I like showing these tables and pointing them out during the presentations because you'll see the comparative, so you'll be able to see what the balances were for the prior year as well. But this is also part of your basic financial statements on page 18, which will show a little more detail if you're interested. I want to point out that your governmental activities column, which this is going to be full accrual, so it's going to have all capital asset activity, all long-term debt activity of all of your governmental funds. So your general fund, your capital expenditure fund, the NIGID fund, as well as the URA fund, and all of your other non-major special revenue, debt service, capital project funds. Overall, your assets increased about $50 million, and your liabilities increased about $25 million from the prior year. Most significantly related to the change in your total assets for the governmental activities is because of significant capital asset infrastructure improvements that occurred during 2017. You had over $100 million of capital asset additions for your governmental activities. And if you'd like to see more detail on that, you can find that in note three to the financial statements on page 49. But your main, so Highway 2 was completed, and then the rec center, the new rec center, were some of the most significant capital projects. The $25 million net increase in your long-term debt is related to the issuance of new debt and refunding debt in the current year. So one of the things that happened, and if you glance at the business-type activities, this would be your finance authority, which was closed out during 2017. So that's why you're going to see a significant drop here. But one of the main events that happened during 2017 was the finance authority held the debt for the Civic Center building. And in 2017, the city refinanced that debt. And that debt's now being housed in the governmental activities. So to refund that debt, there was approximately $29 million of new debt for the cost of the cops, plus the, there was about a $1.2 million premium on that as well. And then, so in addition to having that debt on your governmental activities, all the Civic Center, the building, the assets were transferred over to the governmental activities as well. In addition to the refunding debt that was issued related to the finance authority transaction, there was also 6.5 million of additional cops or certificates of participation issued related to the water acquisition. Any questions on this before I move forward? The next thing I'd like to go over is the summary statement of activities, which this is essentially the operating statement of the city. It can be found on page nine of the CAFER, and as well as it is condensed summary information from page 19 of your CAFER document. Overall, for your governmental activities, there was approximately a $12 million increase in capital grants and contributions. And a lot of this related to additional grant funding, as well as other local intergovernmental funding related to all your significant capital projects that you had going on. There was, and then additionally, you'll see that there was about, almost a $10 million increase in your tax revenues, mostly generated from your sales and tax, sales and deuse tax revenues in the current year. Your expenses increased about $10 million. A lot of that was in relation to just additional activity that you have going on, specifically with all of the infrastructure. Overall, your net position for your governmental activities increased $24.4 million. So you have a very strong net position of about $295 million in your governmental activities. And again, focusing on the business-type activities, you'll see that there's significant changes from the prior year. And this is because of how we had to account for the closing of the finance authority fund with the refunding of the certificates of participation. Your, and one thing I forgot to point out on the prior slide is, if you're interested in seeing the activity related to the long-term debt as well, related to the refunding, you can find that on page 57 of the CAFER in note 3G. Those are the highlights from the financial statement audit that I wanted to point out to you. If there's no further questions, I will move forward to discuss the single audit reports.
I only have one.
Yes.
If Commerce City resident wanted to be able to look at the CAFER, how would they do that?
I can respond to that. After tonight's meeting, we will be making sure that the CAFER is made available on the city's website. In addition, they can certainly contact the Finance Department, and we can provide that copy. We do have a variety of agencies that we are required to send the information to, our bondholders, our, our rating agencies. So we do supply that to a wide variety of people. But primarily, people can go to the website and download any of that information they're looking for.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the residents knew they had the right to come in and get a copy or look at it online.
Yes, they do.
All right, go ahead. Mr. Douglas, you have a question?
Thank you for the presentation. I showed you a question about the general improvement district. How much has been paid so far, well, in 2017, towards that debt? And then I know there was an additional add-on, what, $4 million? Was that an additional add-on to the general improvement district as far as roads for 2017?
An addition of $4 million, is that what you said?
Yeah, am I reading that right? An addition, or is that?
No, there was no addition to the debt amount. We did, we do have regular annual debt service payments. And off the top of my head, I want to say it's around $6 or $7 million a year.
Okay.
Yep, that's right. So if, are you looking at page 22?
Well, no, page 49, maybe the capital assets, 24 million, well, 24, 3, 3, 5, 7, this is additional, addition, 4.6 million? But that's on the?
That's on the capital assets, not related to the debt, yes.
So we're, well, I may come to ask you this question, but I can ask Cheryl this later, or maybe she can forward the information as far as how much has been paid back so far. Are taxpayers have been paying towards that each year on the general improvement district?
In the budget documents that are published each year, in the back of the document is the individual general improvement district budgets, as well as the amortization schedules for the debt. So they can see the principal and interest payment of the debt per year, as well as when that debt will ultimately be retired. So all of that information is disclosed in the budget document on an annual basis, and that can be found on the city's website annually as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. No, this information's great because I know when I first got on council in 2011, this type of information, it was there, but it was really hard to sift through all that. And this is mainly, I'd say, to the credit for our financial department has made this user-friendly. And so for our citizens, it's more in layman's terms to understand how things are assessed and paid out, so.
Yep.
Thanks.
Great, you're welcome.
All right, saying no other questions, go ahead with your presentation.
All right, thank you. I'm going to move forward to your second bound report that says federal awards report in accordance with the uniform guidance. This is what we refer to as our single audit report. And because we are required to do a single audit of your federal expenditures, we're required to issue a report that I referred to earlier in accordance with government auditing standards. And that report can be found starting on page one of that separately bound document. And what this report is, is it's a letter to you on internal controls over financial reporting with the CAFER. And what we say in this letter, the second paragraph from the end of page one, is that during our audit, we identified one deficiency in internal control that we were required to bring to your attention. And that is in finding 2017A, which because of the format of these reports, I'll have you flip to page nine of that document for that finding. And what this is, is I was referring to earlier in the presentation. I mentioned that there was a refunding transaction between the finance authority debt, which was recorded as a business-type activity, and then the city refunding that debt in the governmental activities. And as a result of that, in reading the bond documents and how that transaction occurred, we proposed some adjustments to the financial statements in both the general fund and finance authority fund to properly account for that transaction. So we're just bringing that to your attention. The next report starts on page three. This is our single audit report. So we were, as I mentioned earlier, the city expended more than $750,000 in federal awards. And as a result, we were required to perform a single audit. And what that means is, we have to look at all of your programs in which you expended federal dollars in, and based on a risk assessment, we're required to audit certain major programs. For the 2017 audit, we had to audit the highway planning and construction cluster, which accounted for approximately $683,000 of your total $809,000 in federal expenditures. And when, within this, you actually, you had three separate grants that fell into this cluster. One was wrapping up a Safe Routes to School grant. There was an RTD station grant, as well as an industrial area transportation study. And so what we're required to do is, we're required to obtain the grant agreements for all of those three grants that I mentioned, and we have to perform an audit over all of the compliance requirements. So a single audit is definitely more, more detailed than a financial statement audit. Materiality thresholds are a lot lower. We're required to test internal controls. And then we're also required to test that you are complying with all of the requirements. What this report is telling you on page three is that we audited the highway planning and construction cluster, that management is responsible for compliance with the federal grant agreements, that our responsibility is as auditors to come in and plan and perform our audit. And then we give you an opinion on those programs. And the opinion can be found towards the bottom of page three, which says that the city complied in all material respects. So again, this is a clean opinion, unmodified opinion, best opinion you can get on the major program. On page four, we talk about, we're required to communicate if we noted any deficiencies in internal control that we believe are significant enough to warrant your attention. And through our testing, in the third paragraph on page four, we indicate that we noted one deficiency in internal control over compliance, identified as finding 2017-001, that can be found on page 10 of this bound document, that we consider to be a significant deficiency. And that was, so this is just related to the Safe Routes to School grant. And one of the requirements since construction was involved with this was for you to have internal controls over obtaining the certified payrolls from the contractor, and then making sure that there's an internal control process in place to review and approve those. We could not see any evidence that a review occurred. But the city did obtain those reports, so they were in compliance. It was just that we couldn't see evidence of a review that occurred on, on the reports that we selected. Any questions on the single audit?
Mr. Madera?
Yeah, so you alluded to the finance authority. Can you talk a little bit more about that transaction and the material weakness that you identified?
Oh, yes. So what had happened was, so your, the finance authority is a separate legal entity. It's what we refer to as a blended component unit that's included. It's just reported like any city fund. When we obtained all of the agreements related to the refunding, what really happened was, and let me back up one more step. So all of the initial documents for the Civic Center and the initial 2006 certificates of participation, the debt, that was all in the finance authority's name. What happened with the refunding in 2017? What happened with the refunding in 2017 was, that was put into the city's name, where the city was going to own the asset. It was a very complicated transaction, very unique. I reached out to several people, because we just haven't seen where refundings have crossed different opinion units. And just because of how complex it was in reading through the agreements, there were some differences that we noted. And I know this is jumping ahead a little bit, but in your separate report, which is a member, a letter just to council, it's a staple document. If you go to, this might be, I wonder if it will be a little easier to follow along. But on page three, we write out what that adjustment was. But essentially, the net effect and net position in both the finance authority and the general fund had a zero change on the overall net position. It was just how we needed to account for total revenues and total expenses in the fund. So in the general fund, it's the third entry down, where it says revenue and other financing sources of the 31.5 million, and then there was an entry for the exact same amount to the expenses and other financing uses. Is that?
So how was it accounted for before, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, so the, what has to happen is, in the general fund, it didn't show bond proceeds coming into the general fund, and then a repayment to pay, to refund the debt in the finance authority. So it was missing another financing use and expense. If you, let me see here. If you want to go to page 22 of the CAFER. If you look in the general fund column, towards the bottom, there's a section called Other Financing Sources and Uses. You'll see where there's an amount for 28.3 million coming in, which is another financing source. There's also a premium coming in of 1.2 million. And then there's a payment going out to escrow of 29.1 million. This is the bulk of the entry. Essentially, those items were zero before the audit adjustment. And then there was just a few other differences that got you to that $31 million entry amount. Does that help clarify it? So it was really just a wash? It was just that the money coming in and then going out wasn't recorded.
So it was just a reclass to show it on the...
Correct. Correct. It didn't change the bottom line at all.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Madera, if I may, I just wanted to point out that when the original certificates of participation were issued back in 2006, the reason why the finance authority was formed was because, at the time, banks were not interested in holding long-term leases. So the advice that we received was to create the finance authority and be able to issue certificates of participa, certificates of participation through that mechanism. When we started to go through the process with bond council and our underwriters to refund that debt, we knew that we wanted to take advantage of any savings in terms of repayment of that debt, but at that time, banks were willing and interested in holding the lease of that. That's why the decision was made to move it from the finance authority into the city's debt structure.
Thanks.
Go ahead and continue.
All right. Were there any further questions on the finance authority transaction, which had that material weakness finding, or the finding related to the Safe Routes to School grant?
Saying none.
Okay. Then I will move on to our final communication. So this is our required communication to you to let you know, at a very high level, how the audit went. So... Oh, right there. So management, again, management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. We conducted our audit consistent with the timing and planned scope of the audit, and I'm on page two right now. We conducted, oh, sorry. We complied with all relevant ethical and independence requirements. The significant accounting policies are identified in Note 1 to your financial statements. No matters have come to our attention that would require us to bring to your attention. There are what we consider to be significant estimates in the financial statements, and we consider that to be for your OPEV, your other post-employment benefits. So we evaluate the assumptions that were used in making that estimate used by the city, as well as their actuary. Footnote disclosures that you may be interested in would be the long-term debt in Note 3G, as well as information related to your other post-employment benefits in Note 3J. We did not encounter any significant difficulties in dealing with management. We did pose a few correcting audit adjustments during the current year. The first one in the general fund is to properly recognize revenue associated with terms of an intergovernmental agreement. So the city has a lot of agreements, and this also applies to the same scenario on the third entry for your capital expenditure fund. But the city has entered into intergovernmental agreements to help fund construction of certain infrastructure improvements. And in looking at those agreements, revenue should not be recognized until the city incurs allowable expenditures on that project. So we did journal entries to defer recognition of revenue of those transactions. And my understanding is, most of that likely should be recognized in 2018, or a substantial portion of it. We talked about the second entry for the general fund, which related to the finance authority, and that also ties into how we had to account for activity within your finance authority fund as well. We did have two, what we refer to as uncorrected misstatements. So there are things that we noticed during the audit, but they're not material enough to require adjustment to the financial statements. One related to an overstatement of accounts payable and expenditures, and then the other related to an understatement of cash and accrued liabilities. We did not have any disagreements with management. Management provided us a signed management representation letter at the conclusion of the audit. And to our knowledge, management has not consulted with any other accountants. We did not have any significant issues outside the normal course of our professional relationship with the city that was discussed with management. And the final paragraph is just discussing that. Included with, included within your CAFER document is other information, such as the introductory section and the management's discussion and analysis, as well as statistical sections, which we read and make sure that that information presented there is consistent with the information in your basic financial statements. And that concludes the presentation of the 2017 audit. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Anyone else have counsel have any questions for the auditor at this time? Saying none, I want to thank you for bringing the audit to our attention. I'd like to have you reiterate that the city's in good shape.
Yes, city is in very good shape.
All right. I want to thank our financial team, both of you that are here tonight, for an exceptional job. Every year, it comes back the same thing, that you're doing a great job, and I want to make sure you're recognized for that. So thank you very much. And I also want to reiterate, residents want to go over to the report. They can get it on the internet, or come in and see Cheryl in finance. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right, administrative council business. I know Mr. McBroom has his oil and gas presentation, so I'll turn it over to City Manager McBroom.
One additional item before moving into the oil and gas update. If you've been looking closely at the city council work schedule, you might have noticed that regular meetings over the next several weeks have fairly light agendas. Study sessions, however, continue to be rather crowded. So one thing that we've proposed in the work schedule, and will continue with that unless council has a concern, is to add a study session to the night of August 6th. Those study session items would be discussed by council after the regular meeting. I would suggest probably adjourn the regular meeting, and we reconvene a study session in our normal study session room. Again, it's a fairly light, regular business meeting that night. It allows us to spread those study session items out a bit. They tend to be sort of heavier items, require a little more council discussion, so having some extra time on the night of August 6th, we think will benefit city council. And so we'll continue to populate that study session agenda that night with some items, unless council has a concern. Related to that, we'll be mindful to not load up the regular meeting that night with too many agenda items, so that it turns into a very long evening, which isn't useful for anyone. So I wanted to point that out. Let me know if you have any concerns about that. It's fairly unusual for us to do that, but I didn't want to do it without letting council know that we were doing that to try to spread those study session items out a bit. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gray.
Well, Mr. Douglas, you have something?
Yes. We had interviews over the 4th of July weekend, and Councilman Hughesman asked me to bring this forward. He won't be at the August 6th meeting, where the citizens are going to present, and he would like to be here. And he was going to ask if we could move that section, as far as that discussion, until September 10th, with one of those meetings there, so we can block off his work schedule prior. That way, he can attend, because right now, things are, you know, coming at him pretty fast, as far as, you know, being here and there, and he didn't think about blocking August 6th off. And so that's a concern for him, and he really would like to be here for that discussion.
Mr. Douglas, I think you're referring to the oil and gas presentations that are planned for August 13th?
Yes.
It's totally council's discretion if you'd like us to shift those two presentations. One was from COGA, the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. The other was from North Range Concerned Citizens. We'd be happy to shift those to September 10th, if that's council's desire.
And I was going to ask that during council administrating business, unless you guys want to take that up now.
We can take it up now, Mr. Douglas. I know we shifted it once for the citizens, some of their speakers weren't going to be available at the time, so we moved it around. I just want to be careful that, you know, we've got two different groups that are going to be presenting, and they're organizing their speakers, and I don't want to, I want to be mindful of those speakers that we don't readjust, and then end up with another conflict, because now we moved it again and put it to where someone's not going to be here. So I think for me, I'd like to know from the citizen group and COGA if there would be any imposition to allowing that to be shifted to September, rather than having it at that August meeting. I know both groups are here. Ladies, can you speak for the citizens group as to whether that would be an impact? Okay. How about Ryan? And so we can shift it if the council so desires. I just wanted to make sure both parties that would be here speaking would not be negatively impacted.
Okay.
So is there a motion to amend that date to September?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the August 13th meeting, and to put that, as far as making adjustment in our schedule, either September 10th or 17th.
I would recommend, go ahead and do it the night of September 10th. That way, you can, we'll try to structure that study session. Oil and gas is the only item on the agenda, certainly the first item, so we can conduct the study session here in council chambers and begin right at 6:00.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Wardiolah.
I'll second that motion.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Motion is carried. The oil and gas study session is moved to September 10th. All right, I'm going to turn it back over to you, council members that have any administrative council business. We'll let Mr. McBroom get through the portion of the oil and gas update, and then we'll, I'll ask again if there's any administrative council business from the council, and we'll take it up at that time. Mr. McBroom.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you for having me. This will be another monthly update in our ongoing effort to provide monthly updates to city council regarding oil and gas activity in Commerce City. And again, you can see the slide here. I did include, once again, the background slides that we did the very first month after the question slide in your packet, or not in your packet, but in the city manager update, so that you have those as a constant reference every time. So starting off with city permits. Uh-oh, there we go. Starting off with city permits, the city has still not received a permit from an operator directly to the city for an oil and gas permit. However, as has been the case, there are a number of applications that have been submitted to the COGCC, especially in the spacing applications. And since we did our last monthly update, there was one new spacing application, which I will show you on the map in just a moment. There were no new Form 2s that were submitted in the last month since our last update. However, there was one new Form 2A, which is the Red Tail, and that was by Extraction Oil and Gas. And I will show you both those two new submittals in just here on this map. It's kind of hard to make out, but this area is actually hatched. You can see the red line there. That is the new spacing application by, is that showing up? No, it's not showing up on there. In between Potomac, to the west of Potomac, you can see a pink area between what amounts to 106th or 108th, all the way down to 96th. That is the new spacing application. My cursor doesn't show up on the screen, I apologize. But that is the new spacing application that was received by Great Western. The reason it's hatched is because it does overlap with a previously submitted spacing application by Extraction. And so I know that they, they being the two operators, will need to work that out with the COGCC and each other on how those spacing applications get worked out. The new spacing application is the Red Tail pad. You can see it just north of 112th, just to the east of E470. It's to the south of the Blue Jay pad. So that is the new activity that we have received from the state. Again, no new city applications and two state applications since last month. Other activity that has been undertaken by staff, we have continued to meet with Extraction on a more regular basis. They have far more applications in than the other operators, but we are still also meeting with Great Western about their permit that they have submitted. We are also doing our best to line up some future speakers for this speaker series, the first which is tonight. And so our hope is that next month, we will be able to have CDPHE speak. We also submitted a letter to the Adams County LGD, local government designee, regarding the Sparrow 2A application. Just to give you an idea of where that is, that's actually in, I really wish the cursor worked, but it's just to the south of 88th, and it's directly to the west of E470. worked, but it's just to the south of 88th, and it's directly to the west of E470. That is colored on your map here, but that's because it's part of a spacing application that's in. That land is actually in unincorporated Adams County. Hence, our reason to send that comment letter to them, hoping that they can include our comments in their comments to the COGCC. We also sent a copy of that to the state as well. Primary comments on that regarded our ongoing negotiations, request to reduce truck traffic, reduce tanks, to consider implementing and installing portions of the bike and ped plan that are especially along the E470 corridor. There's also discussions about, on their application to the state, there was discussions of a 32-foot wall, but not a ton of details beyond that. We are hoping to see more details and understand how that's going to affect nearby property owners and the impacts from E470. Finally, at the neighborhood outreach in June, the planning division was able to gain feedback through a survey that was presented to residents that came up to the table. So, we got a lot of very good feedback in there. There were a lot of questions that were asked by the public about oil and gas activity, so it was a very beneficial thing. We're going to do that again in the August neighborhood outreach. Following my presentation tonight, that really is the majority of the update regarding activity, and certainly, staff is here to answer any questions you have on that activity. But tonight is the first night of our speaker series. Julie Murphy, the Director of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, is here tonight, along with some other members of her staff, to present an overview of their regulatory process and framework. So, again, staff is available to answer any questions you may have, but otherwise, I will be glad to introduce Ms. Murphy.
Come on up. Good evening.
Thank you, council members, mayor. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Julie Murphy. I'm the current Director for the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. With me this evening are Greg Drono. He's our environmental manager, and in our world, surface use permitting falls within the environmental manager's roles and responsibilities. And also with him is Melissa Howsey, who is the oil and gas specialist on our team, looking at surface use permits in Commerce City. So, that's who we brought. We have a very narrow focus this evening. We're not really prepared to talk about permit-specific issues with what's pending before us. We're here to more give an overview of what our surface use permitting process looks like, what our team looks at as they're reviewing permits, and to be available to answer questions. To the extent you have questions about many of the other spheres in which we regulate, whether it's inspections, whether it's enforcement, whether it's the engineering and the downhole construction of a well, I am more than happy to bring the right staff back to talk to you, but I sure don't have them with me today, and it's way outside of my wheelhouse. So, I'd much rather get you the right information. So, with that, I think I would like to have Greg come up and run through what we do and how we do it as it relates to surface use development.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you again for having us here to walk through, as Julie said, some of our permitting processes and how, and our regulatory approach to primarily the surface development component of oil and gas permitting. And I understand from Mr. Kramer that you have received some information already to date, so you understand that COGCC has a dual permit process, where we permit the downhole, which is a very technical review of the engineering of a well and the legal requirements for a well, and then we also have a permit at the surface. So, I'm not going to go too much into that, although I will have to skip a few slides in order to skip that. So, I will proceed through the first couple of slides here pretty briefly. By way of introduction, as I said, we do review the legal locations and right to construct, downhole specifications. Our engineering group is responsible for that. The surface specifications, which is what I will focus on tonight. And then also, I want you to certainly understand that we do follow up on our permits through a rigorous inspection program. A little bit about COGCC and our staff. We've got a staff of just over 100, responsible for reviewing our permits and ensuring that they comply with the rules and are protective of public health, safety, and welfare. We've got professional engineers, registered geologists, hydrologists, biologists, looking at those. We've got an average of 20-plus years, I think it's 23 years, on staff, not all at the commission. Much of that experience is, was obtained in regulatory compliance consulting, environmental consulting, and oil and gas operations. So, wide variety of backgrounds there in our staff. Reviewing our permits is a team of permitting specialists, and I've included a map showing the geographic breakdown of where these folks work. And one thing you'll notice is that there's an awful lot of people focused in a small area in the state, and that's because that's where the bulk of the operations are occurring today and where the bulk of the permits are coming in. Our engineering group, same thing, distributed across the state, responsible for reviewing permits, understanding the nuances of the different oil and gas basins in the state, and the technical components and requirements therein. And again, you'll see that we've got several people assigned to this busy area in what we'll call the Wattenberg area, the Greater Wattenberg area, the DJ Basin. And our oil and gas location assessment specialists, Melissa Howsey, as Director Murphy introduced, is our location assessment specialist that will be responsible for reviewing Commerce City's surface permits, the Form 2A oil and gas location assessment. Just a brief split of the, sort of the different roles those two permits play, and again, I understand that this has all been presented to you. I'd be happy to take questions on it as we go through the program, but I'm not going to spend too much time on this. I included this slide just briefly to show the changes in the trends in permitting and oil and gas activity statewide. The primary thing I want you to see here, it's, I know it's a busy slide, so it's pretty hard to read, but if you look at the far left side in 2009, what you'll see in the back two rows there are 147 horizontal permits to over 5,100 total permits in the state. And clearly, there's a shift as you look to 2018, and these are projected numbers, you know, 2,200 horizontal permits out of 3,100 total permits. So, that shift over the last eight, nine years, from vertical and directional wells to horizontal wells has just dominated the industry, and our agency has really had to be responsive to that, changing our engineering programs, addressing our location assessment programs to respond to that. "We're busy" is another message that that slide sends. I was going to talk a little bit about the Form 2 permit to drill. Primarily, it's just a, you know, there's the legal review, covers the drilling operations, the surface ownership, the mineral ownership, objective reservoirs, ensuring that there's a right to construct, to build the location. Our permitting staff can put conditions of approval on a permit as necessary based on their permit-specific review. The engineering review looks at the physical aspects of the well, the casing and cementing program, offset well evaluation. This has been a big initiative on the part of COGCC to make sure we're reviewing existing vertical and directional wells when new horizontal wells are permitted, and making sure that those existing wells are up to our current standards, so that we're not leaving aging infrastructure that wouldn't meet our current standards in the ground. We review the directional data, make sure that they're targeting where they are supposed to be targeting. And again, our engineers can place conditions of approval on the permits. Jumping to the oil and gas location assessment permits. In 2008, COGCC was engaged in a significant rulemaking to implement a couple of legislative bills, and 11298 was specific to wildlife. A lot of oil and gas activity at that time was happening on the West Slope, and wildlife considerations were a huge concern. 1341 was more around the public health, safety, and welfare, so more protective of people. And so, since 2008, we've been implementing those two legislative initiatives through the Form 2A or location assessment. It provides a review of the environmental setting. It provides for consultation with our partner agencies, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, local governments such as Commerce City, and it also provides a vehicle for site-specific public comments. Our goal with the Form 2A review and our assessment is to minimize adverse impacts from oil and gas operations with respect to the location sighting. Our goals are always to avoid impacts where there's, you know, where we can move sites away from potential receptors, we want to do that first. Where we can't move them away from potential receptors, we would minimize impacts and mitigate those impacts. So, we're always looking at that from the perspective of sighting. Following that, a couple other major rulemakings in the COGCC's world were the setback rulemaking of 2013, in which we established several buffer zones in which more stringent requirements, if you wanted to be closer than 1,000 feet to a home, more stringent requirements applied. If you wanted to be closer to 500 feet from a home, even more stringent requirements applied. And in some cases, you can't do that without seeking waivers from those people whom you're approaching upon as an oil and gas operator. Following that was the Governor's Task Force rulemaking. I believe the Governor's Task Force met here in Commerce City.
Right.
What's that?
It was in Brighton.
It was in Brighton. I'm sorry. That's probably like the worst thing to do to a city council, is confuse you with another municipality. I apologize for that. So, in that rulemaking, the concept of large urban mitigation area facility was adopted and placed in our rules, and provides for a rigorous involvement from local municipalities, local governments, on the front end of our permitting process and the sighting process. Form 2A is required for any new oil and gas location, for expanding or modifying an existing location, for adding a well or a pit to existing location, or if an operator's making substantive changes to an existing location. Our staff reviews over 200 individual data fields on every Form 2A, 17 sections, such as hydrology, soil and groundwater, cultural features, cultural setbacks, right to construct, and five, minimum of five attachments. Most of our Form 2As come in with closer to nine attachments. In 2017, over 600 approved, and over 300, over half of those were for new locations. In 2018, so far, 162 oil and gas locations have been approved, although to date, we've received 350, with 257 of those for new locations. So, the environmental considerations that we review are proximity and direction to groundwater and surface water. Obviously, the direction to groundwater is typically down. Surface water, we do consider the topography and how a potential spill on an oil and gas location could potentially negatively affect those water resources. COGCC is an implementing agency for the water quality standards and classifications of the Water Quality Commission at the state, and as they relate to oil and gas operations and exploration and production waste. Wildlife resources, as I mentioned, has been a big thing and an ongoing focus of the oil and gas location assessment team since 2008. Environmentally sensitive areas, wetlands reviews, floodplain issues, and other things like that. We also look at exploration and production waste, drill cuttings and fluids management, and the disposal plans for those waste streams. And then, planning for interim reclamation. When an operator finishes drilling their wells, they pull that site down to a minimum to return much of that land back to the surface owner for their use. Sometimes, that doesn't happen with the larger production facilities. Obviously, they build out that pad and they use the entire pad, but for the well sites themselves, interim reclamation is a pretty significant undertaking. Public health, safety, and welfare, this is a big focus of our work these days. Proximity to houses and commercial buildings, we call them in the vernacular building units, but that's not very personal. We're thinking about houses. We're thinking about where people are when we're looking at those. Proximity to high occupancy building units, and that's schools, that's hospitals, that's daycare centers. We do review access roads and routes, although the local government does have a strong regulatory role when it comes to working out access and haul routes. We're looking at that final access road off of the main road to an oil and gas location. And then, documentation of pre-construction conditions, so that at the end of the life cycle of the well, the site can be returned to what it once was. I mentioned consultation. This is a really important part of our process. If a site is in a mapped, sensitive wildlife habitat, or restricted surface occupancy for wildlife, it triggers an automatic consultation with our partner agency, Colorado Parks and Wildlife. If a local governmental designee requests for purposes of public health, safety, and welfare, or if an operator is requesting a variance from certain rules, CDPHE consultation is automatically triggered. Local governments always have a consultative and comment role on the Form 2A application, and surface owners and operators required to consult with their surface owner in the conduct of their business. I mentioned some of the additional rulemakings that developed some setback considerations and other special location rules, I'll call them for lack of a better word. The designated setback locations that were established in our setback rulemaking in 2013, established a buffer zone setback of 1,000 feet, an exception zone setback of 500 feet, and also includes less than 1,000 feet to high occupancy building units and less than 1,000 feet to an area called a designated outside activity area. These areas, it's, the operator has to take additional steps to permit in those areas. For example, 1,000, less than 1,000 feet to a high occupancy building unit, if an operator applies for something like that, so that, again, that's a school, that's a hospital, that would trigger a commission hearing. And since 2013, when that rule went in place, we've had no commission hearings on that. So, it's effectively act to exclude that area from oil and gas development. So, we think that's been very successful. The concept of urban mitigation area is a little bit of a misnomer, because oftentimes, we're talking about residential, you know, rural residential homes. But what it is, is if an oil and gas location is proposed in close proximity to a number of homes, which would be 11 within a 1,000-foot semicircle, if it was butted up in a bare field against a neighborhood, if we counted those 11 homes, it would trigger the urban mitigation area requirements. And in 2015, through the Governor's Task Force rulemaking, we established this concept of large urban mitigation area facility, which creates, you know, more steps in the process and involves the local government planners in the selection of the sighting for that location. So, one of the big tools that COGCC and operators and local governments employ in the review of oil and gas location assessments is best management practices and conditions of approval. As I mentioned earlier, we always try and avoid impacts first, minimize them where they can't be avoided and mitigate them further from there. Operators provide on their permits best management practices, and we view these as, you know, opportunities for the operator to specify what their actions are going to look like or what their operations are going to look like on a site-specific basis. So, they're telling us exactly how they're going to implement a provision of our rules, for example. COGCC applies, as I mentioned, conditions of approval onto the permits that we review and process, and those conditions of approval, those best management practices, are all And those conditions of approval, those best management practices, are all designed to provide clarity or specificity and oftentimes more stringent requirements based on the site-specific review. And our enforcement, our inspection staff is out there, they're looking at those, they pull up the permit on site, they can review the conditions of approval, they can review the best management practices and ensure that they're being complied with at the site. And our enforcement group considers those all enforceable parts of the permits and can enforce those accordingly. And that's nine thousand miles an hour, oil and gas permitting. What I wanted to do is kind of drive through that pretty quickly so that I could offer you guys the opportunity to ask questions, if you will, and I'll take whatever questions you've got.
Great. Mr. Madera?
Yeah, I have three questions. My first one is, in the permitting process, does it consider the city development plan when it's considering these setbacks?
So the large urban, if an operator proposed a large urban mitigation area facility, which is, you know, meets those thresholds, A, it's got to be in an urban mitigation area, and B, it's got to be considered large, which would be eight wells or more, then yes, that would trigger them to be, to involve the local government and their planning process early in their site selection. The idea is that they would come to you before they'd say ink to surface use agreement. Oftentimes, operators are working with surface owners to get a surface use agreement where the surface owner is onboard with their location selection. And so sometimes that's kind of ferreted out through that process.
My second question is, you know, conversely, we've had issues with water and specifically groundwater contamination. Just not too long ago, we had something come up. And, but, so what does the COGCC do to mitigate that and to monitor that there's no impact to the groundwater? Because we do get part of our water supply from wells here.
Thank you for the question. So COGCC has a robust monitoring, groundwater monitoring program that requires pre-drilling, pre-Spud monitoring of domestic or other water wells in the immediate vicinity of a proposed oil and gas well. So before they drill it, they have to take samples. And then following the completion activity, one-year post and five-year post, they take additional samples of that to make sure there's been no impacts. But before any of that, COGCC reviews, again, as I mentioned, the casing program and the cementing program for a proposed well to make sure that the well design covers all the aquifers and protects them through the use of steel casing and cement in the annular space. So it's, you know, kind of a two-pronged approach, if you will. We do also respond from time to time to complaints, citizens concerned about their water quality, and COGCC will respond to those complaints by sampling their water and providing a report of the results to them. And if we do find anything that looks like oil and gas impacts, we investigate those until we find the source, stop the source, and take care of the problem.
Okay. And then finally, if the setback initiative, I think it's ninety-seven, were to pass, what impacts do you see that to the COGCC?
We did put together a summary of that and what the impacts would be. It's available on our webpage. I can say that I've glanced at it. My understanding is that it cuts out a significant percentage, I believe it's eighty-four percent of the fee land in the state. If you look at really sort of the oil and gas producing basins, it's almost a complete, it blocks it out almost completely. And thank you for taking those questions individually, because I wouldn't have remembered them all three.
I had a follow-up on his question about water. If a well is drilled and it has a negative impact on a water supply, who's liable and accountable to replacing that supply for the residents of a community?
So if we can identify a source, then the operator of that source would be liable and accountable. We have worked with operators, the hydrologic investigation is complicated when you're dealing with confined aquifers at, you know, seven, eight hundred feet. We have worked with operators to provide alternative water supplies for people, and in some cases where we couldn't identify exactly which oil and gas well was the believed culprit, we've had, we've reached agreement with operators to plug multiple wells and provide an alternate source of water. So even though we couldn't specify exactly what the source might have been, we felt we had a pretty good idea and the operator, you know, cooperated and took care of the problem.
And when you're doing these permits, do you make sure that financially the operator can remediate a problem such as water contamination?
All our operators are required to maintain, I believe it's one million dollar general liability insurance, and also they're required to post a financial assurance for an individual well, or if they have more than a certain threshold of wells, they can have a blanket bond throughout the state. So they're all bonded and insured.
All right. I just don't know if that's enough to fix a problem with the water, a million dollars.
So our rules, again, we are an implementing agency of the groundwater quality and standards, and the, our rules do have a provision that says if you violate water quality standards, you are in violation. So we can take enforcement action in those cases as well and levy fines against an operator.
All right. I'll move on. Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. I have a show of questions for you. But just to piggyback on the mayor with the water, a huge percentage of our water comes from aquifers, our drinking water. I know recently I read a remark from Adams County Liaison, with the extraction of oil and gas permit was returned to the state for amending when it was discovered that the plant at the Duck Club intersection, well, it intersected with a drinking water aquifer. So basically, that permit was not allowed because it intersected with water aquifers. How would that have an effect here in Commerce City? Because we have so many wells up north, and there's some are shallow wells, but we get a lot of percentage of our water from below ground. We just, many years ago, we had issues with Arsenal, and there was a big fight for that to make sure we had drinking water and a water be a certain standard. And just last week, I guess, there's a report through the state from Carl Springs, even here in Adams County, about a chemical that was detected in the water from a firefighter phone. And it's, I think it's parts per billion or trillions, but still, it affected the water quality. And people are raised, have raised concerns over that. So when an operator comes in here, we do not know the chemicals that are used to frac. And when those chemicals go downhill to break up the earth and to get that gas out, they leave, they don't, it's not a hundred percent gets taken out. There are chemicals that are left behind. And where they go, they go into the earth. And so that could leak into other areas. It may take days, it may take hours, it may take months, years, we don't know. I just don't want to get in a situation like we have with asbestos where that was something great to use and come back to find years later, it was a huge health concern. So can you comment on that as far as if an operator submits a permit and you find out that it will affect drinking aquifers, would you consider not going forward and giving the permit because of, as far as aquifer and area drilling?
So I can say that we will not permit a well that by design will impact groundwater aquifers, flat out. That's why we have engineers and permiters and location assessment specialists, professionals reviewing these applications. I'm not sure the specifics of the Duck Club pad, I don't believe it was rejected because the wellbore would penetrate an aquifer. Because if you look at the map of Colorado, there's fifty-four, fifty-five thousand active oil and gas wells, twenty-three thousand of them, you know, just to the north and east of here, nearly all of them penetrate the Arapaho Aquifer, the Laramie-Fox Hills Aquifer, other drinking water aquifers. So those aquifers can be penetrated and penetrated safely through a program of proper wellbore design, wellbore construction, and installation. We monitor, we request the operators or require the operators run cement bond logs, which verifies the cement on the outside of the surface casing. We require that they maintain wellbore integrity so there aren't fluids migrating from one formation to another. Our rules don't even allow them to take, to allow fluids from one oil-producing formation to contaminate another oil-producing formation, let alone an aquifer. So we would not permit a well that by design would impact an aquifer. Now, if you talk about some of the, you know, known impacts in the state of Colorado, primarily an issue that we've had is with methane. The Laramie-Fox Hills Aquifer naturally contains methane, and we have had a couple of instances of oil and gas thermogenic methane is what we call it when we identify it. And it's very mobile. So we can see it, we can identify it, and we haven't found it with traces of other chemicals. It shows up, and that's sort of the one indicator that we can find and deal with. And in those cases, as I mentioned before, we investigate those, we find the source, we stop the source.
Right. And I know you're familiar with the movie called Gasland, you know, that started this whole debate, especially in the east coast. And that showed here also, they, when they did their report and doing the documentary, places up in Weld County, they show people turning their faucets on and, you know, could light, because of the methane within the water, they could light their water on fire. Two years ago, I was in, went to a water conservation discussion in Montbello because people were having issues with the drinking water. And there, some people could light, exactly, they had methane in their water, they could light their water on fire as well. And that's within the city of Denver. We also talked about, on your slide, about setbacks, a thousand feet to high occupancy buildings. What about high occupancy, what about high population areas? You know, our growth up here in Commerce City has taken off so much in the northern area. An area where you'd showed here where the different areas that they want to permit and have gas wells come in, that's going to really hurt our growth. And just the position of those wells and going forward and into the future, now, we talked about capital improvement projects right now worth, around a billion dollars. But we don't talk about mitigation or damages to people's investments that they have made. And, you know, that's something to juggle as well, because you're going to implement where one's going to profit in one sector of business based on what this is going to do, and others, several others are going to fail. And that might have a great hit on our revenue, especially our future. And we're just getting started down here in the core city where we're pretty much built out, we're landlocked. But in the northern area, we have huge area for expansion, for future growth. This might stagnate our growth. This might hurt our investment. We talked about our financial capital and all that. That might diminish that. So do you consider not just a thousand feet to a high occupancy building, but to a heavily populated area? Because right now, we have two families of four movement in every day. That's what our growth is. Do you take those in consideration when a gas company wants to come in and get a permit?
Sure. And I think that speaks to Councilmember Madera's question as well earlier. And, you know, we do look at those from the location assessment. We are really primarily focusing on what's there today. It's a little harder for us to plan around things that may be there tomorrow. And I think you, you know, you likely struggle with that in some of your review considerations as well. So, you know, as far as, you know, making sure that an operator is planning around your development plans, ideally, the two are planning together. There is a property right to the subsurface, and ensuring that those property rights are, you know, developed, co-developed equally with the surface is an important consideration. Unfortunately, it's not a consideration that the COGCC can really point and go yea nay on. And so really, the opportunity that, you know, a couple of the oil and gas operators are giving you guys to work with them on, you know, fitting the development into the overall plan is a great starting point.
Because I know with the rules right now as far as setbacks, the state being preemptive and all, we don't really have to say so as far as the setbacks. Well, that's why this measure twenty-five-foot setback hopefully will be on the ballot. But to say about just that setback, I guess we can, I think through ten, I think it's through ten forty-one or so of ordinance, we could actually have a setback from a real estate developer setback from oil and gas. But, you know, that's going to be hard for them to build out what they need to do. You know, we're trying to make sure everybody's safe here. Public health and safety is top key. I listened and watched your presentation, and not one time did you mention the Martinez And why COGCC has not implemented the Martinez decision? So my question is whether COGCC thinks any decision is the law, which is clear, which clear it is, and why hasn't COGCC think they have the liberty to ignore that?
So we do provide a robust permitting process that is described in the Oil and Gas Act, and we at the staff level follow that. As far as what's going on with the legal matters, that's not really an issue that I can address.
Okay. All right. So is this not an almost breathtaking form of lawbreaking by those who have taken an oath to uphold the laws of the state?
I don't believe that's an appropriate characterization.
Okay. At least the very, I can just write it down, at the very least, shouldn't have this, shouldn't there be a moratorium on permitting any gas or oil permits until the decision is resolved under the appeal?
That's not the legal opinion that we've received.
Okay. All right. Clearly, all new permits that are illegal, if weighed on the Martinez decision because they are used pre-decision criteria of balancing and not protection.
Our permitting process, as I mentioned, is a robust permitting process which is designed to protect public health, safety, and welfare.
Okay. I disagree with that. You know, this Martinez case, it's a big deal. And I feel it's kind of like you're asked to hold off and wait until the decision's made, and instead, it's business as usual. And I think we need to make sure that going forward, that you have what is law right now in your decision-making. And you guys have failed to do that. So that's my area that as far as protection, health, the public health, safety, and welfare of Commerce City, I've been tasked to make sure that I uphold that by law.
And I also have been tasked to make sure that I'm protective and my process and my staff are protective of the public health, safety, and welfare of the entire state of Colorado, Commerce City included.
Okay. I appreciate that. So I will be following closely as far as how things are going forward. And I will hold you accountable and also bring up when things aren't right.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you guys coming in and letting us know what's going on. I'll let the citizens know, because this is televised. We just have a direct feed now. We used to go through a different connection when it came to communication. We have a direct Channel Eight feed where citizens can be informed, they can go back and they can revisit this, whatever section they would like to. But I- But I do appreciate you taking the time and answering my questions, and so.
Thank you for your questions.
Are there any other questions from council on the presentation from the G O C C? C O G C C? Mr. Madara.
How much is each well bonded for, or each operator required to be bonded for the wells? You mentioned earlier that they carry a million-dollar insurance and a bond for each well?
You know, I don't want to answer that specifically, and only because that's not my expertise. I do know that it's dependent on the depth of the well, and most of the wells that are currently drilled exceed the maximum depth, so they get the maximum bond. And then, as I mentioned, they can be combined with, you know, if an operator has, I believe it's a hundred wells, then they can have a blanket bond that's essentially distributed across their wells. And I apologize, I can send you that information if you'd like.
Yeah, if you can do that, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the presentation? Seeing none, I want to thank you for coming in tonight. This is a challenge that we have to go through. We want to make sure whatever's done is done safely. We're kind of hamstrung, because you guys hold the authority, not the city, on allowing oil wells to go in. But we are concerned, and the water issue is a big concern, especially after they found another contaminant in our water. And years ago, we had leaching from a deep well. It was a disposal well out on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, and it had a negative effect on our shallow well field that's here in our community, and everybody had to be taken off their wells and put onto municipal systems. And so, we've dealt with that. We do not manage or operate our own water system. It's a special district that operates our water system here in Commerce City. I'd like to make a request that our staff reach out through the permitting process and through the September tenth study session on oil and gas, to ask and advise the Water District Board of Directors, if they want to have a representative there, because they would be our water experts, and I think that would be appropriate to have them there to answer any questions about contamination, what happens, and how they handle the water side of our drinking supply. I think that would be beneficial, not only to the G O C C, COGCC, and our residents, to have that information, so maybe we can get them to do a short presentation, or at least answer some questions that night. Chris? Thank you. But I look forward to the September tenth discussion, and to talk about how everything plays out. It's a very important role. I want our residents to know what our authorities are, what we can do, what we can't do, what your authorities are, what you can do and you can't do, and how we make sure that we're looking out for the best interest of our community, and still allowing people that have property rights to access their right to the minerals that are underneath the ground. So I'm looking forward to a great positive dialogue, to be informed at a better level than we are today. So thank you very much. Ma'am?
Before I hand it over, can I just say one thing? Thank you very much for listening, for your questions, I appreciate it. And also, I wanted to say thanks to your staff for really taking the bull by the horns on this issue, and working really hard to bring people to the table to work it out. That might have preempted you, and I apologize, but thank you.
Yeah, Councilmembers, I wanted to express the same gratitude to the hard work of your staff, of Chris and Dominic in particular. Chris was integral in our task force rulemaking, in providing Commerce City's perspective and how to engage proactively on these issues. And that's really, to me, at the end of the day, what this is about. I've been heavily involved with COGCC for about five years, and it is that pre-planning that helps us accommodate both parties that is critical to this conversation. And I think Chris and Dominic in particular have reached out in a way that helps us participate in your thinking and helps you participate in ours. And without that, the benefit of each other and the operators' input were left with less positive outcomes. So I highly encourage the collaboration and look forward to continuing to engage with you as this issue evolves, so.
We'll see you on the tenth of September.
We'll have somebody here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to additional administrative council business.
Mayor Ford.
Yes, sir?
Sorry to interrupt, but I wanted to add on something to staff's update on the oil and gas from a legal perspective. You'll recall in our, one of our prior presentations, I mentioned a lawsuit against the city of Thornton regarding their regulations. There is a recent development towards the end of June in that case, where the court issued another ruling striking down Thornton's insurance requirements locally as preempted, but then upholding their flow line regulation, which required removal of flow lines after abandonment. The case is currently closed, but an appeal remains possible. So I wanted to update you on that, and then the cities, I believe, of Lafayette and Broomfield have adopted updated regulations. So with staff, we're reviewing this as we go forward.
Thank you for the update. All right, additional administrative council business. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. I know I've spoken to council members about this, as well as our city manager, city attorney, as well as some of the other staff. But just to kind of announce it publicly, I have recently accepted a position with Adams County, working on their poverty reduction, homelessness reduction, as well as neighborhood outreach. And consequently, since I will be reporting directly to the county manager in Adams County, it was a really tough decision, because it does require me to basically resign from city council. So I spent about three or four days really talking to my confidantes, I guess is the best way to put it, as well as my colleagues and friends and family, to try to figure out if it was a great choice. And ultimately, it does come down to me accepting the position, and consequently, will be resigning from city council, which we've already talked about. I know staff is already starting to vet out the process on that. It was a particularly difficult decision, because I have spent about three years, I think, total, on city council with three different city council groups. It's pretty amazing how fast the years go by, as well as spending even a few more years on top of that, serving on boards and commissions throughout Commerce City. But I felt like now was the best time to step away, based on the fact that this opportunity was just too good to pass up. It's precisely what I want to be doing, it's work that I want to be doing, and I'm glad that I get to remain in public service within Adams County and serving the community in a different capacity. So as discussed with staff, as well as city council, I'll be going through August sixth, I believe, is what we discussed, which will then allow you guys some time to find the next person. I believe you have thirty days. It's up to you guys to kind of talk about what those processes are. But I do want to thank you guys for the time, for working with me on city council these last few years, as well as the residents, for trusting me to serve you in this capacity. It's been a true honor, and it was a really, really difficult decision, one that I still sometimes question. But now that I've kind of moved on, I guess that's just the best way to put it. So I just wanted to thank everyone, and I'll see you these next few weeks, as I close out the other boards and commissions that I'm sitting on. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Diaz. It has been a pleasure serving with you, and I'm sure that we'll have an opportunity at your last council meeting to say some goodbyes, and make sure that you're recognized for all of your efforts with the city. I want to talk about the process. I know that that process, right now, is somewhat cumbersome under the council policies because of the timing, and with the budget retreat coming up, we want to make sure that that new council member has the opportunity to participate in that budget retreat and not come in just after. So I would turn it over to the city attorney to talk about what the recommendation for amending the council policy, and what the process would be, and when it would start, to find a replacement for Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Members of council, currently, Section 4.5 of the charter provides, when there's a vacancy, the first thing happens is that council determines that there is a vacancy on the record. And so that can happen on the night of August sixth, when Mr. Diaz formally steps down. At that point, council has ten to thirty days, no longer than thirty days, but no less than ten days to appoint someone. Council Policy Twenty-One currently addresses how those vacancies are filled. That was drafted in 2011, several councils ago. Some other laws have changed since then. So I would recommend that council take a look at Council Policy Twenty-One, to see if it conforms to what your expectations are, knowing that there is a rather tight timeline to accomplish filling the vacancy. And so I will circulate, before the end of the week, a few proposed options potentially for council to consider, and maybe discuss at the study session on Monday. I would recommend adopting that new policy on the night of the sixth, so that that can start immediately. But in general, what, the structure would stay the same, that within a very short period of time, one to three days after the sixth, there would be a public announcement of the vacancy, asking people to submit letters of interest to the clerk, most likely, for appointment. The council would be notified of all of those over the time that they're submitted. I would recommend a fairly short period of time, because you don't have much time to fill it. At which point, council would then look at the number of people who have submitted. If there's more than one, your current policy requires interviews. So council considered, do you still want to do interviews, or do you just want to allow for presentations? And we'll decide the format of that, hopefully, by the sixth. Current council policy provides for a scoring, and then a vote, which I would recommend maintaining primarily that structure. But we'll go through that as we go down the road. But that would be generally the structure, would be a short period of time for letters of interest. Then council would develop kind of the format for interviews or presentations, with hope, and I know the city manager will look at schedules with council members, to see if a special meeting would be needed, if we can do it all in one night, on the night of August twentieth, would likely be the preferred time within that thirty-day, ten-to-thirty-day window that allows for council to accomplish the appointment before the budget retreat on the twenty-seventh, so.
Mr. McBrew?
The only thing I would add to that, that schedule helps us meet the thirty-day time limit, helps you appoint somebody before the budget retreat, which makes good sense. That particular structure would require that you do interviews in the appointment the night of August twentieth. Depending on how many letters of interest you get, that might be a good idea, or it might not be a good idea. So some of that, we might have to wait and see how much interest there is. But it's also a question for council, would you be comfortable doing interviews on the same night that you planned to do an appointment, or would you prefer to do interviews on a different night? If interviews are on a different night, it might be hard to do that on a Monday, and then if we do it on another night of the week, the challenge will be picking a night where all eight of you are available. We already know Councilman Huesman has some time away due to work commitments during the month of August, so it may be a challenge.
And I would point out that council cannot identify a vacancy until August sixth, till the seat is vacated, correct? So that process cannot start until August sixth, but we can prepare and be ready for August sixth.
That's correct. That gives you the opportunity to clarify your process.
So we won't be accepting any application. And this is for the folks at home and the people in the audience, we won't be accepting any applications for vacancy or anything else until the process starts after August sixth, and the seat is vacated.
Yes. If council changes as I will propose, look for the week of August sixth, with the deadline on August thirteenth, to submit those brief letters of interest.
Thank you. That helps with the timeframe. I just didn't want a bunch of people rushing down here tomorrow and putting in their applications. And Paulo, good luck to you in your new job, and I would ask that we have the staff put together something for August sixth in the atrium, some appetizers or something, and have Paulo's family show up and send him off with the respect that he deserves. Is that acceptable to the council?
Yes.
All right. I wouldn't want it anyway for any of the rest of you either. So any other council administrative business? Mr. Douglas?
Yes. You know, I've been thinking about this for some time, and it deals with the family crisis, and I know we just have the ability to do live streaming with our Channel Eight. Do we have the ability to do a banner on the bottom of the screen, you know, do like public announcements?
I'm not sure, but we can check.
Okay. If so, I would like to propose that we do something around, that deals with crisis with families. I've been talking to several people. A lot of crises are around relationship problems, family crisis, anxiety, depression, substance abuse, suicidal thoughts, bullying, stress, and disability, and.
All right, take your time.
Just the passing of Amador's steps. So those are my thoughts around that. We could do something about that, if you put a phone number on the bottom of the screen.
And you know, I don't disagree with that, Steve. If we could have even a helpline crisis number for mental illness of any kind to be available on our channel, I think that would be very helpful. And I know the Commerce City Rotary Club has taken on the role of identifying and trying to help with mental illness and doing mental health awareness classes. I would recommend to any of our residents and staff and council, if they want to participate in one of their one-day sessions on mental health awareness, that it, you never know when it's going to strike close to home, and that you can reach out to Sharon Maybe with Commerce City Rotary Club. She heads up our mental health awareness. And I know the new hospital, or not the new hospital, but the old St. Anthony's North is now a mental health facility. So we want to make sure that anybody in our community that needs those services has access to those services. So thanks for bringing that up, Steve. Councilwoman Frank?
So we had, I had discussed a while ago about the Civic Academy that I was going to talk to council about. And originally, the pilot program was going to be starting in September, with participant information forms being due by August thirteenth. But I would just like to ask council with what's going on with Paulo leaving, that that seems to be more pressing right now, if there would be objections to postponing this pilot program to next year, like February and March. Just wanted feedback on that.
What is council's desires? Anybody have any ideas? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I wouldn't mind doing that, since we're going to have a new council member and getting that person up to speed on what's going on, because there's a lot to do, and they're going to feel like they're drinking from a fire hose, so, and then I think that would be a great start then in February, January, February, yes.
All right, any other council administrative business?
Oh, I have one more, sorry. I wanted to say something, but, sorry, I didn't mean to get emotional, but.
Yeah, don't get emotional this time.
That hit me close to home there, not just with our past council member, but other family members. When I was in Little Rock for the infrastructure, for the infrastructure committee I'm on, we also talked about economic development, and a company, I think it's called Strategist, they're a consulting company with retail. And they're going to put on a contest here that will be submitted in November at the LA Summit. Has to do with city bringing forward their issues around bringing in retail. And this successful, I mean, successful, sorry, successful city that does get an award, I think it's going to be three cities, they will give a type of service that they charge like a hundred thousand dollars for, but they will give that, that service for free to a city who are in need of economic development. And I can get some more information as far as what the criteria is going to be, but since we have over three hundred-something million dollars worth of leakage, I think we would, you know, be a perfect candidate. But I will find out what information that we need to provide them to be in that, well, that arena. If that's okay with council, I can get that information and bring it back.
Thanks, Steve. All right, I do have a couple of things. First, I want to start off, there's a gentleman who's brought this to my attention twice now, and a while back, and then again tonight. I want to make sure he's in the audience, I want to make sure he knows we brought it up. But I have had a request to remove. But I have had a request to remove cats from the at-large ordinance for animals at large or the leash law, because, and I believe Mr. Stilato came up and spoke at Citizen Communication at one time, because the opinion is that cats are hard to keep on a leash, and they get out and they jump fences, and they are different than a dog. And I wanted to ask, and going off of what the city attorney said, is that it's a council policy direction, and is up to the council, if you so desire, or if anyone on council desires to have a discussion, or to remove cats from the animal code for at-large. Is there anyone that wishes to discuss removing cats from the at-large ordinance? Seeing none, I want to make sure that I brought it up, so that Mr. Stilato knows that I didn't leave it sit on the table. I did bring it up. Just at this point in time, it doesn't look like anybody has an interest in removing cats from that ordinance. I did have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. This is the first time in a long time, since 1999, when I got elected my first time on council, that we had a regular meeting after the 4th of July and did not have anybody in this audience complaining about fireworks. And a debt of gratitude goes out to our police department and the enforcement that went on. I want to thank this council for increasing the fines and making them mandatory for people that are violating that law. Because any of you that have been here, the meeting after the 4th of July, usually the room is full of people, and this Citizen Communication signup sheet is about three pages long, because people with PTSD and animals and everything else have been dealing with fireworks for the month before and the month after 4th of July. So, I have to tell you, in my neighborhood anyway, it's the quietest 4th of July that I had in my neighborhood since we moved into that neighborhood. And hopefully, it was the same way for most other residents. There was an occasional firework going off here or there, but it wasn't like all-out artillery every night of the week, leading up to and after the 4th of July. So, Chief, thank you for engaging and putting into place your "Write It and We'll Light It" campaign. How many citations did the police department give out on fireworks? Do you have a number?
Actually, I have an update in the city manager report that was sent out last week.
Right. I wanted it to be on TV.
Somewhere around 70, I think, Chief.
Around 70, Chief?
That was a couple that came in when we did the report. We have about another 20 coming in.
So, about 90.
About 90.
About 90. And from my understanding, everybody that received a citation knew they were against the law. So, good work on the police department's part. I know it's really hard to enforce those kind of ordinances, because everybody's doing it at the same time. It's kind of like speeding. We hope you get caught sooner or later. But I want to also thank the residents for trying to be respectful of their neighborhoods and engage in the city's fireworks display, or go outside of the city limits and light your fireworks, just because we do have a law that it's illegal, and it was nice to see better compliance this year than we've had in the past. I want to mention the Cannonball Run. Cannonball Run was something that I didn't know even happened, but it was a bunch of car clubs, I guess, coming from Wyoming down through Commerce City to somewhere else, and they stopped off at King Supers on 104th and Chambers. And it was very late on the weekend, like midnight, 500 cars. And I guess caused some confusion. Did talk to the chief of police, and I know there were some residents that were upset that more wasn't done, people weren't ticketed, cars weren't towed. But after talking to the chief, they were on private property. The owner of the property, King Supers, could have asked them to leave. They were respectful from the standpoint that they weren't breaking any laws. And the police department did block some roads and help them leave our community with the most ease that we could allow. But 500 cars on the way to a car show with four police officers would be pretty tough to deal with that kind of a riot if one broke out. But I think our police department handled it appropriately, and I would apologize for any disturbance that may have happened with the neighborhoods in that area. But once in a while, there are things that are out of our control that we have to deal with. I'm glad the chief was able to manage to help them along their way. I guess they were trying to find their way to Brighton, and he said it was an easy route. All you have to do is go down here and turn that way. So, I'm sorry about any inconvenience, but sometimes things are out of our control. We didn't know Cannonball Run was happening. We didn't know they were stopping at King Supers to see Steve, but they did. The other thing I wanted to touch on, because I know a lot of residents I've been watching on Facebook, is the concrete situation, and I brought it up to the city manager tonight in my pre-meeting that I had with him. We had 104th, had some issues. And, you know, normally, when you have any clay soils, they'll expand when they get wet, and we haven't had a ton of moisture. And we know that road had a major issue around Potomac. Got in there and got it passable again, but it wasn't an inconvenience. And on my way to city council tonight, I did notice at 96th Avenue and Havana, the median is heaved up about two feet, maybe even more, where the concrete's just heaved up out of the ground. There's also some of the path, pathway there at 104th and Highway 2, where the pork chop is to turn south onto Highway 2 from eastbound 104th. That's also heaved. So, I want to, on record publicly, ask that the city look at their inspection process and make sure that we are meeting all the expectations for inspecting all of our infrastructure as it goes in for subgrade and the things we need to avoid as much as possible damage to our roads, especially our new facilities. Rather take care of it on the front end than have to go in and make repairs if we can identify a potential problem before we pave. So that the residents know we are looking into why some of that infrastructure's had some cracking and some problems. And from my understanding right now, we know it's not water-related, from a water pipeline underneath the road type of water-related. And then, I also want to thank the Water District for informing our residents, even though it wasn't a requirement, it didn't violate any state or federal regulations, the amount of the product that was identified in the water, and its parts per trillion that we're talking about, and that they're keeping our residents updated as to what they're finding, when they're finding it, and how they're dealing with it to make sure and ensure that we have a safe potable water supply. After getting notified by the Water District, from my understanding, that the water is completely safe to drink. And if you have any concerns, because the Water District does not fall underneath of the authority of the city, and we do not have anything to do with the potable water supply within our city, that you reach out to South Adams Water. If you have any concerns about whether your water is safe to drink, the folks that I think need to be more concerned would be folks that have shallow wells and even some deep wells in the area. South Adams can come out and test that water and make sure that your wells are safe for potable drinking water. But South Adams does manage the municipal system for water distribution in Commerce City. And they did a great job of getting the information out and making sure they notified everybody as to what their findings are. So, with that, Mr. Teeter, do you have council communication?
Yes, I just wanted to touch briefly on the 4th of July again. I know Commerce City was billed as the biggest and best show in the area, and I think we lived up to that expectations. I thought this show this year was fantastic. It had a good length of time, and I think the residents enjoyed it a lot this year, and hats off to whoever's in charge of that part.
I agree. Thank you. All right. No more citizen or council communication. We'll go into reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mayor. We did send the city manager report out last Wednesday. Two key reports, one on the fireworks data that the chief summarized here earlier, and then our weekly oil and gas update, but you heard Mr. Kramer update that information earlier this evening. So, that's it.
Mr. Shiesley?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I have a couple items I wanted to mention this evening. The first of which, I will be out of town Thursday through Monday, so Matt Hader, the deputy city attorney, will be at the study session next week on my behalf. A few months ago, the city seized a business at the flea market relative to a tax issue. That business on Friday obtained an injunction against the city proceeding with an auction of that property to recover the tax debt. And so, with outside counsel, we're responding to that temporary restraining order to be able to proceed with that and recover the unpaid tax. Last week, I participated in the city attorney interviews for the city of Brighton. I don't believe they've made a selection announcement yet, but I know they appreciated your allowing me to participate in that process. And then, two other things. Next Wednesday, we will be hosting the Metro City Attorneys Association luncheon at Dick's Sporting Goods Park. We have about 40 RSVPs for that from city attorneys from around the front range coming to visit and see what Commerce City has to offer. And then, the very last thing is, a few months ago, or weeks ago, I guess, a marijuana-infused products manufacturer came in and requested council discuss its excise tax on marijuana. I had that tentatively scheduled for an August date, given the difficulties in scheduling, and the business has not yet provided me some additional information on that. So, I just wanted to let council know we are working on that, but working to get it on a study session in the fall at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I don't have a lot to report. Rotary is going well. I am the new president. Just held my first meeting last Wednesday.
Congratulations.
Thanks. It's interesting. Really, really like Rotary and what it stands for. We do have some events that'll be coming up. Our golf tournament is the 26th, Brian?
27th.
27th. Rotary Golf Tournament will be the 27th. We do have a big event this, that's upcoming. Will be at the fairgrounds during the Adams County Fair. We'll have, I believe it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we're going to be doing our cow pie bingo. Tickets can be purchased from any Rotarian, and we'll have two events per day to do the cow pie bingo, and everybody stands a chance to win a little bit of cash.
What days in August?
August, I'm not sure. I would have to look. But I know it's the Adams County Fair and rodeo. I believe it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, two events at each one. And we have our peaches coming up. Anybody that wants to order peaches through the Rotary Club from Palisade, I will be putting in a peach order. So, if you are interested in peaches or pears, I'll put you down and get you the peaches and pears from Western Slope. So, just reach out to me, and I'll get you on the list. Otherwise, it's been fairly quiet. And other than the announcement from the Water District, things are going fairly smooth. And I know staff's having a lot of issues juggling meeting schedules, because we're moving stuff around so much and moved stuff again tonight. And then, with Paulo going to be leaving, we've got some work coming up on our hands that we'll have to be attentive to. But other than that, that ends my report. Does anybody have anything they want to add before I close us out? Of course, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Just that, well, last Tuesday, met with the high school business advisory board. We talked about several different things this coming year for the high school students at Prairie View High School. Different criteria they have to meet in order to be in the high school business advisory club. Also attended the kickoff of DIA, starting in the airport terminal. They're going to do a whole different, a whole different security wings. Normally, you'll go to the airport, you know, you get your ticket, and then you, right when you get to the hallway, you go through security. So, they're going to have a great hall down below. Crazy event. Magic Johnson, I guess his company is going, the one going forward as far as the construction, along with Saunders Construction. And he was there talking. Other than seeing the parking lot where I work filled with a bunch of high school kids, I think it was older kids as well, maybe young adults too, but there were a lot of cars, so I had a lot of complaints about people trying to get in and out of there. Some people took a half hour to get out. I appreciate the police department, our police department, and the work that they did to make sure everybody was safe and secure. So, thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. And I want to thank Councilman Gualleola and Councilwoman Frank for being there on July 7th. I thought I had to be out of town. And Benjamin, for being there for interviews, because I know it's tough. We put a lot on our plate, and I want to appreciate the new council members for taking their time and being there. And so, I just want to bring that forward. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. If there be no further business to come before the city council of Commerce City this eve, we are adjourned.